Lake Mills City Council, January 17th, 2023. Misty, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
So please note that Mrs. Bishop is joining us via Zoom tonight. So we have all five present. Would everyone please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Correspondence, I'll start. Had a memo supporting the Ryan Brothers as an EMS option. And also had a wonderful email earlier today regarding senior citizen housing, the need for more of that, and heavy traffic on Main Street when schools, at the beginning of the day for school and at the end of the day for school. So a good email there. Ms. Kurler?
I'll give my correspondence and just a note, I think we skipped over the minutes, so let's just be sure to go back to that.
Oh, I just wanted to get on with this meeting.
I guess so.
Go ahead.
I guess so. I had the same correspondence regarding affordable senior housing and two contacts regarding EMS, one from a citizen in support of Ryan Brothers and another one of a notice of a county meeting regarding EMS that'll be held next week.
Mr. Fields?
I had the same one about the senior housing. I also got the invite and had a sit-down with our county rep on the EMS. And then I also received a phone call from the township on EMS also.
Great.
That's it for me.
Ms. Quidnow?
I had the same correspondence as everyone else.
Mrs. Bishop?
I had the same as well, thank you.
All right. So let's backtrack. And we'll do the correction and approval of our city council minutes. There's two of them there, so can we have a motion on both of those?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from the December 20th and January 3rd meetings.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Kurler, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
That's 5-0. Passes. So questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. State's open meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So the floor is open for public comment.
Tom Murphy, 317 West Lake Street. Just a couple of comments regarding the EMS question that's up here today. When the city of Lake Mills takes over EMS service, it should provide an equivalent or better staffing model than the Lake Mills EMS presently does. To do this, the city council must set the expectation that the fire department's first ambulance is staffed at an advanced EMT level with dedicated scheduled personnel 24/7 regardless of other call activity. And I oppose the city sort of subsidizing the townships for the next six months by only charging them $17 per capita for the remainder of 2023. That added cost is more like $40 per capita for the six months till December 31st. That's a taxpayer comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Murphy?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Beagle, North 6617 Shore, Dills Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Town of Lake Mills Chair. Good evening. I am here tonight to provide information and thoughts on the EMS issue. Town of Lake Mills has great responsibility to present EMS options to our town residents. This is so they can voice their opinion. It is a fact that our town board has not had ample opportunity to have our town residents weigh in on some of the decisions that have been made and that will be made tonight by city council regarding EMS. I just want to be ultimately transparent that decisions previously made and that will be made tonight by the council have not been voted on or supported officially yet by our town board. Our goal all along has been to provide our residents with the best possible EMS services for the cost. We will continue to move forward providing our town residents with options that is only fair to them. We want our residents to have plenty of time to weigh the options before the end of April. With this said, I would like to see the detailed proposal brought forth before our town board, before our annual April meeting. This means that preferably the heavily detailed plan comes to us by early March. The Town of Lake Mills continues to be dedicated to community. However, because of this difficult issue, we need to make sure that we have the best dedicated team and professional service for our residents. I also want to be crystal clear that we are sick and tired of hearing rumors and hearing badmouthing of other entities and other communities when it comes to fire and EMS. This is unacceptable behavior and it seems to continue to go on. We want a service that cares and is part of the solution, whether they are chosen or not. The longer the negativity lingers in the Lake Mills area, the more difficult it will be to support an entity that has this going on. Besides, we all want professionals showing up at a fire or EMS-related call that are positive and happy because there may be instances where they all have to help each other out. I know there has not been a good track record with the last city administrator and other councils over the past 20 years with how our township was treated. Dwelling in the past does not do anybody good. However, it does take considerable time to heal from this. There is forgiveness that comes from my heart to city officials, and I hope that I would be forgiven if things did get out of line on my behalf or another board member. I hope that we can work together to gain solutions for our residents. And when things do not pan out, that it does not jeopardize or cause hard feelings in the future. Good process typically eliminates this, and there is much needed improvement on the city's behalf to keep things very transparent for all residents and provide an inclusive process to town boards going forward. I wish you all very well and thank you for your time tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Beagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beagle, thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate your remarks and appreciate your spending a number of different times coming to city council meetings. I appreciate that. I just wanted to check in, when is the meeting of your annual meeting of your town residents?
It's the third week of April. It's late. Yeah, it's not the normal timeframe because it's an annual town board, or a town board meeting followed by our annual meeting or vice versa.
And so you're saying you'd like information on options for them for maybe a month before to give your board time to kind of work?
Our board and our residents, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do. Tom, have you had a chance to look at the documents for today's meeting?
Very briefly, yes.
Okay. Has there been any discussion among the towns about the options that are provided this evening?
No, there hasn't. We haven't had enough time to decide that or to meet. A lot of us have full-time jobs, this is a part-time deal for us.
Same here.
So it's tough to get all that stuff in and with all the other meetings that we have with our short staff.
Totally understand. How much time would you need in order to, if you wanted to have all of the towns meet to decide on something like that, would you need?
As far as referendum options are concerned, is that what you're talking about? Or is it talking about just the very brief options that have been provided with?
Just the very brief options that have been provided?
I think we need a level of detail.
Okay.
And an entire plan, and I think that was discussed last night.
There wasn't a meeting last night?
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other comments? Public comment tonight? Going once, going twice? All right, public comment is closed. Thank you. Manager's report. Mr. Daley?
There's a number of, excuse me, a number of attachments in your packet. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. You'll receive my normal written report at the next city council meeting with the typical list of my ongoing activities and updates on major projects. I simply, I'm trying to transition to having them at the first meeting of the month rather than the second.
Any questions for Mr. Daley?
I do.
Yes.
Mr. Daley, I noticed that on the account or on the record for the fire department and EMS, there are some gaps in what the nature of the call is for the Lake Mills EMS. And I'm just wondering, do we have any understanding of what that might be? It's especially actually on the first page, so I just, and it's way back from September, but I thought, oh, do we just not have that information? Actually, I see it as kind of a pattern throughout November and then December, that the nature of the call is not made, but the fire department information is there.
I would need to research that for you. I don't have an answer prepared for you tonight.
That's fine. At least we have the idea of paged and routed on scene at what times those are available. So that's good information, too. I just wondered if that was something that we were missing that maybe we should have? Thank you.
So those are the same calls, Michelle, right?
I don't think they are. Are they?
Yeah, well, for instance, when you're looking at September 11th, 2022, that all correlates to the same call.
Oh, yeah, I see that now. So, okay. So both entities showed up for that one call?
Correct.
Gotcha.
So there's at least one documented comment for each of those calls?
Not so much a comment, but just the nature of the call.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you for helping me understand.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Daley tonight? Yes?
I have a question, perhaps this is for Sam regarding, in the general, I think it was a general fund monthly summary, there was a reference to stale checks and some checks that had been voided out. So could you just expand on that a little bit? Is this kind of a standard housekeeping process?
Actually, it's a state statute.
Oh, okay.
That requires each town, village, and city, they're required by the 10th of January of the odd number of years to void any stale checks that are more than 12 months old. We have to void them and then we create a check to the county. We have to give the county that money as well as a list of the last known name and address, well, the name of who it was to and the last known address of that person. They have to publish it in the paper and give those people an opportunity to come forward and claim those funds, all done through the county.
Okay, so it's an every-two-year process then, it sounds like?
Yeah, every odd year, yeah.
But then there still is another opportunity for the person the check was made out to to?
Yes.
Claim those funds?
That is correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Kurler, do you want me to answer your other questions? Oh, no, that's fine. I was curious about a couple of the larger expenditures.
I'll respond to your email then.
Mr. Daley, I had sent you a note pertaining to We Energies outage or their issues with their gas line in December and was wondering if we could get more information and understand maybe what the shortfalls were and what the corrective actions are for the future so that we may not see that in the future. I recognize that that's not part of our utility, but it does impact our residents. Did you get a chance to follow up on that?
I have a call. I tried to contact a rep and I'm still attempting to make contact. The brief, in talking with Paul Hermanson, the utility director, the brief explanation is that they had an issue with their supplier, which caused a shortage of natural gas at a certain moment. And so they asked their service areas to reduce usage in order to conserve the supply while that issue was rectified. But I will get more information for you as soon as I can.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Daley. Next is council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from Public Works Board of December 13th, 2022. Any questions on those minutes?
I did have a question.
Yes.
For Mr. Daley, what, do you know the status of the ATV route signs? I know that was discussed at the last Public Works Board meeting, but it didn't give an update.
We recently received approval from the DOT for placement of the signs along their state highways. And so now we are still working with the Quad City Runners groups to get those signs created and then installed. And so they are still, Quad City Runners is providing those signs. And so we are awaiting their receipt of those signs and then installation. But we should be nearing the conclusion of this and the signs should be up and ready soon.
I think in the last week's Public Works meeting, they had said that the posts were up already and they're just waiting to be, the signs to be erected. They got the approvals, I think, for the highway.
Yes.
And everything sounds good from that respect, right?
I believe so, yep.
Yeah, Mr. Hermanson did give an update on that last week. That's not in these minutes because they're from the prior month, but he did give an update on that. And yeah, it sounded like just waiting on the signs to be installed and the state has approved.
Any other questions or comments?
I was just going to comment that you maybe have noticed that the Public Works Board is continuing to talk about yard waste and composting and it's been an issue that that board has been working on for quite a few years. And so they want some forward progress. So just a heads up that there may be a recommendation to the council sometime in the coming months on that topic.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right, see nothing else. I'll accept these minutes into our record. So we're good to go. Council business. First up is Resolution 23-2. Misty, can you read that resolution?
Resolution 23-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Jefferson County for county library services.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 23-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Jefferson County for county library services.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Kurler.
Staff comment. This is an annual approval. The agreement is included in your packet, but it essentially allows for the city to receive funds from the county for the library services that it provides at just under $115,000.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes?
I'm just curious, was there any changes from prior years? I know this is something we've approved in the past. So any changes in their expectations or what we're required to do?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move forward with the roll call for Resolution 23-2.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 23-3. Misty, can you read that as well?
Resolution 23-3, authorizing second and final installment payment of TID number eight reimbursement grant to Tyranida Properties, 203 North Main Street LLC. Redevelopment project 203 North Main Street. Parcel identification numbers 24607131233101 and 24607131233100.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-3, authorizing the final reimbursement grant from TID number eight to Tyranida Properties, 203 North Main LLC.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is second TID reimbursement grant payment for the redevelopment of the pharmacy building on North Main Street, 203 North Main Street. Some months ago, you authorized the first payment. That project has reached substantial completion. They have occupancy of the building, I believe, that they are open. And I've heard it's been pretty vibrant. Beautiful building, by the way, so you should definitely check it out. But this is the second payment in line with the development agreement. I believe that they've met their obligations in redevelopment. And there are some punch list items that need to be completed. There is some flat work and some concrete work that needs to be done next year to complete the alleyway that's kind of adjacent and adjoining this project. There is more concrete work that needs to be done in the back, but otherwise occupancy is granted and they're open for business. So any questions, certainly happy to entertain them. I believe that the proprietor and his right-hand woman.
Gal.
Lady?
Gal. Stacy Schroffnagle, very prominent and respected citizen, are available to answer questions if you have any.
I did ask them as they walked in tonight that I noticed that there was a lot more parking on Main Street tonight and asked them if it was open, and they did say it was trivia night tonight. So if you're watching this meeting, you could go to trivia night instead of watch this meeting live. But we do have a good meeting tonight, so. All right, any questions or comments? Looks like we're good to go. All right. So let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-3.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next is a first reading of ordinance 1251. Misty, can you go ahead and do the first reading?
Ordinance 1251, I'm in city code chapter 505, peace and good order, and creating section 505-8, sale and possession of electronic smoking devices.
All right, so this was the first reading, so we do not need a motion at this point. But if there are questions or comments, the floor is open for those at this point. And staff, why don't you give a quick overview of the reason for this, I guess, before we get into any questions or comments?
Chief?
Yeah, I think Chief Schroder is here. He might be the appropriate person to start the conversation.
Fantastic, thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
So it came to my attention a few weeks ago, Officer Johnson, that's Earl, brought it to my attention, that we don't have an ordinance prohibiting electronic smoking devices or vaping pens or devices. So she approached me and asked if we could possibly create an ordinance prohibiting them. So I did some research and in fact found we do not have an ordinance prohibiting them. We do have ordinances adopting state statutes that prohibit possession of tobacco or nicotine products by minors, that prohibit purchasing nicotine or tobacco products by minors, which would cover the cartridges that go into these smoking devices, but not the devices themselves. So in addition to the possession of the device, Officer Johnson requested that I pursue an ordinance prohibiting the use of these devices by anybody on school grounds, which there are already statutes that prohibit smoking on school grounds. So this would essentially just be an extension of that. So in researching the statutes and some ordinances from surrounding municipalities, I worked with Attorney Drescher to come up with the draft ordinance that was presented to you that does those two things, essentially prohibits the possession of these devices by minors and prohibits the use of them on school grounds. We have consulted with the public school district. They are very on board for the ordinance as it relates to use on school grounds. They're very supportive of it. Attorney Drescher had that conversation with members of the district, but I don't see any hesitancy on their part related to this ordinance. One thing that did come up in our discussion, and I'll just address it now in case you're wondering, is that there is a federal law that prohibits the sale of tobacco or any of these items to someone under the age of 21 that was passed as part of a budget in 2019 by President Trump. But it only prohibited the sale of them. It didn't prohibit the possession of tobacco products or any vaping products. So enforcement of a federal offense is generally not something we do at a local level. Our state statutes have not been amended to change the age. All of them still cite the age of 18 related to any of the tobacco or nicotine products. So we essentially followed suit with what we've done in our other ordinances and asked you to keep that age at 18, understanding that if that state law were to change, then we would have to amend that.
All right, let's see if there's any questions or comments while you're still at the podium. Any questions, comments, yes?
I had a question. Oh, I guess it's pretty clear, but letter E says, "No person shall use an electronic smoking device on any school premises," so that's regardless of age, adults as well cannot.
Correct, and that's in line with the fact that people cannot smoke cigarettes or any other tobacco products or use them on school grounds per state statute.
Okay, thanks. So that would relate to people going to sporting events, that type of thing?
Correct, and adult walking outside and wanting to use a vaping device outside of the school, it would prohibit that action.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. So that was the first reading. We'll have two more readings in the next two meetings, and that third reading will result in a vote on the ordinance. All right. Next is the discussion decision on EMS options. Staff comment?
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
I have a point of order on this issue.
Thank you.
There's been a previously binding decision by council on this issue, and no council member has made a motion to do anything differently. So to that point, I'm not sure what the discussion decision is for on EMS on this agenda tonight.
I didn't quite grasp the, you kind of cut out a little bit on me, Catherine. I didn't quite grasp the whole thing. Did you catch that, Mr. Drescher? Okay.
I can repeat it or?
Go ahead and repeat it, Mrs. Bishop.
Okay, I was just making a point of order that there's been a previously binding decision by the council on the EMS issue, and no council member has made a motion to do anything differently thus far. And so I don't know what we're hoping to achieve with this agenda item for a discussion decision on EMS options tonight.
Okay. My understanding of what was voted on was that there was a direction given, but we needed to look at the options further and understand the budget numbers and to make a decision if? and to, to make a decision if we were going to go to referendum, and at what price we would be looking at, the cost involved, we would be going to referendum at. So that was my understanding of what this discussion is about is, does that make sense?
My, my understanding of the motion was to proceed, was to instruct staff to proceed with the implementation of a unified fire and EMS department with full-time coverage during the workday, Monday through Friday. The purpose of this agenda item is to update the city council that I believe implementation of that option is infeasible due, under the stated goals of the city council for level of service. And so I believe that the intent of the motion of proceeding with implementation has been fulfilled as my report back to you is going to be that that is an infeasible option to provide the level of service that I understand the city council is expecting. And so the idea was to update the city council on that implementation, and then to provide alternative options that would meet the service level expectations of this body.
Catherine, do you have any, Mrs. Bishop, excuse me, do you have any, any feedback on, on your original statement? Or do you want me to, to make a decision on this?
Well, I see that the information being presented tonight, under the discussion portion of this agenda item, is largely the same as what was presented on December twentieth when we made a decision to go ahead and implement the unified department with Monday through Friday full-time staffing. So unless there's a motion by a council member to go back and revisit that decision, I don't know what else we can do on this discussion item tonight.
Catherine, I'm, I'm, I had the same kind of question, this is Michelle, by the way, I had the same kind of question about the particulars of this, and it's my understanding that we, we did not have the information that we should have had when we made the decision that we did the last time we met due to probably timeliness or not having enough time to gather that information. And we were in a rush because we needed to make a decision with regard to this because it may or may not lead to referendum. What I wonder now is if we were to hold back on making a decision, if that would impede our ability to put forth a referendum, should we need one at a later date. So just like at the last meeting, unfortunately, we are at a position of need. We have to make a declaration or a decision of some kind so that we can continue to move forward. Unfortunately, I feel that if we continue to put it off, we're just going to get ourselves back on the carousel, going around and around and around again, trying to figure out what we're going to do, and we're, we're going to run out of time. I'm not saying that I like the idea, I'm just saying these are what I consider to be the facts.
May I? This is Attorney Drescher. I, I think there is new information here. The, the items that were attached to the agenda that supported previous motion twenty-two twelve two dash one, which, which you did vote on and you did decide on option two, the unified department, Monday through Friday, full-time staffing in the December twentieth meeting. That is the origin motion that is being discussed right now. My contention here is that there is new information with regard to the budgeting that Mr. Daley has prepared with regard to certain unknowns that were presented at that meeting, and that there may be a reason to reconsider that motion. But I don't know that a reconsideration of motion twelve dash twenty-two, excuse me, twelve, twenty-two dash twelve dash two dash one is really necessary here because I don't know that anything is, is changing. You're kind of going on to the next step. I think that previous motion was a pretty good indicator of, of the council's direction of the, of certain decisions with regard to preferred service and the implementation of that service. So as this agenda was prepared, I believe this specific item that we're under now was intended to be an update and to gauge the council's opinion on how to proceed forward before addressing whether or not a resolution for a referendum is advisable as desired by the council. So I don't know that there's really like a, going back to that previous motion and, and changing it. This is more supplementary to that. I, I think you bring up a, a good point and it's definitely worthy of discussion, but I, I'm not aware of any action that's been called for that actually changes that previous motion.
I would also just like to clarify that option number two in the, in the memo that is provided is a deviation from full-time staffing Monday through Friday. That option that's available to you is, does have twenty-four seven full-time staff available. It, and I, as I provide my staff comment, it'll show that it is, it is no longer full-time staffing only during the workday, Monday through Friday, as I, as I do not believe that implementation of that option, proceeding with implementation of that option is feasible given, given the additional facts that I gathered in the month since that meeting.
Mr. Waters, may I?
Go ahead, Catherine, I'm sorry, or Mrs. Bishop, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So I understand what Mr. Daley is saying, that he feels like there's some infeasibility that he's discovered, but his conclusion of that is not sufficient to invalidate a city council motion giving direction and authorizing making decision for the unified department with Monday through Friday full-time staffing. So absent, my only point is absent a motion by another council member to do something different, I don't think it's appropriate to move forward on this discussion piece, on this agenda. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so to address your, your point of order, I'm going to allow us to move forward on this discussion so we can discuss the referendum and, and make appropriate measures in, in that regard. So let's, let's move forward with the discussion. So staff comment?
On December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the city council directed staff to proceed with the implementation of a unified fire and EMS department with full-time staff present during the workday, Monday through Friday. Paid-on-call and paid-on-premise personnel were expected to cover the remaining hours of the day and weekends. Administration used the following goals to determine if implementation could be successful. Those include no reduction in service currently experienced by the community, a minimum of two personnel onsite twenty-four seven three sixty-five, and advanced level care on the primary ambulance. Based on those service expectations and conversations with Lake Mills EMS and the Lake Mills Fire Department regarding their volunteer roster capabilities, full-time staffing only during the day, Monday through Friday, is infeasible. There's an inadequate number of advanced-level volunteers on the rosters to cover the hours full-time staff would be absent. The memo included in your packet describes two staffing models that are designed to meet the previously stated service expectations. Option number one reflects the recommendation presented by McMahon and Associates. This would include the hiring of six full-time firefighters slash advanced EMTs and one additional captain for a total department staff of nine personnel. The total staffing costs are approximated at one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars, and total department expenditures are approximately one million five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. The staffing level would reduce the burden on volunteer staff by ensuring significant coverage during the workday, Monday through Friday, as there would be four personnel present. This would provide the ability to respond to two medical calls or one fire call without calling additional personnel. It also provides coverage of two full-time personnel overnight and on weekends. This option provides the highest level of service and lowest burden on volunteer staff. A referendum of four hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars is necessary to fund the creation of this department. Option number two reduces the number of staff to six. To account for this reduction, the captains would be incorporated into the twenty-four-hour workday schedule. Total staffing would include a full-time chief, two captains, and three firefighters slash advanced EMTs. There would be three shifts with one shift relying on a paid-on-premise volunteer member. The schedule would have two personnel onsite twenty-four seven three sixty-five. The total staffing costs for this option are projected at one million nineteen thousand and forty-six dollars with total expenditures of one million three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. It should be noted, this represents a significant reduction in services compared to option number one. At any given time, there would only be two full-time staff slash paid-on-premise personnel at the station, including during the weekday when volunteers are least available. This will require a higher reliance on a shrinking volunteer workforce. Any reduction in the volunteer roster, particularly among those with advanced EMT certification due to retirement, moving from the area, or becoming inactive due to family or professional obligations would affect the department's ability to provide service. This could include flexing to a basic-level service when full-time staff are unavailable or an inability to respond to a call. A referendum of two hundred and eighty thousand and five hundred and ninety-nine dollars would be necessary to fund the creation of this department. City administration has met with county administration to discuss the funding difficulties communities in the region are facing. County administration stated discussions regarding county support would begin in late January, but any action would not be implemented until twenty twenty-four at the earliest. Administration has also had discussions with the chief of police to discuss Lake Mills Police Department staffing levels. The chief indicated a need for two additional police officers to both return to pre two thousand and eight levels, which was eleven full-time officers, and add investigatory capacity to the department. Chief Schroeder is present tonight to answer questions regarding their staffing levels. The cost of adding two police officers to the department is approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Based on the current status of the volunteer roster, the difference in level of service to the community caused by reducing full-time staff and the department's stability gained by increasing staffing, administration is recommending option one to ensure the community continues to receive excellent fire and ambulance service. Administration also recommends the inclusion of funding for two full-time officers in the referendum to modernize the department's staffing levels and add dedicated investigative capacity. The total referendum would be for six hundred and fifty-six thousand and six hundred dollars. This represents a twenty twenty-four property tax increase of approximately five hundred and one dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar home. I would also like to explain what is included in that number. The Department of Revenue has very specific requirements for municipal referendums of this nature. Specifically, the city must use its best estimate of what its total allowable levy will be in the year the referendum will be implemented. If the city were to levy the full capacity the state allows in twenty twenty-four, as the city has done in the past, and borrow to fund its capital improvement plan, without any referendum, it's estimated the property tax increase would be around a hundred and seventy-four dollars on a home with an assessed value of three hundred thousand dollars. If approved by the voters, the city would be allowed to exceed its levy limit by an additional six hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars, which would be an additional three hundred and twenty-seven dollars in estimated property taxes on the home assessed at three hundred thousand dollars. This option represents a significant investment by the community in public safety, and the recommendation is not made lightly. However, based on administration's understanding of the city council's expectations for service, this option provides the greatest level of stability for the provision of these services. The city of Lake Mills is not alone in facing these issues. Fort Atkinson recently went to referendum for the same purpose. The city of Jefferson is considering a referendum. The Village of Johnson Creek and Western Lakes departments are facing volunteer staffing issues, and Marshall Area EMS recently consolidated with the city of Some Prairie due to staffing issues. According to the Wisconsin Policy Forum, twenty-three municipal referendums were approved in November of twenty twenty-two, which represents a record. Twenty-one of those referendums dedicated all or some of those funds to public safety. This will likely continue until the state provides relief from the restrictive levy limit regulations or the state provides additional financial aid to local governments. If the city council determines to forego a referendum question, city administration will immediately begin evaluating options for a private contractor to provide EMS service to the community as of July first, twenty twenty-three, when Lake Mills EMS ceases providing service.
Okay. I think to go back to Catherine's point, Mrs. Bishop's point of order, I keep saying Catherine because the screen says Catherine Bishop, but, Mrs. Bishop. Her original point of order was that option two is what we voted on previously and approved. So I think what we're kind of looking at here, I believe what we should be looking at is option two, A, B, and C as our, as our options, and if we wanted to go back and look at option A, we would need to, to take some type of council action to, to do that. Does that make sense?
I guess I'm unclear on, I thought I heard Mr. Daley say that option two that's before us tonight is not the same as the option two that we voted on in December. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
While the staffing levels are the same, the budget for an option, the option two considered in December would be considerably different as those were built on having staff only Monday through Friday during the normal workday. By increasing coverage to twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and having full-time staff present, at least two every day, that does change the budgetary considerations. Again, I want to reiterate that, based on my understanding of the city council's expectations for the level of service, the, the, the motion that was made to proceed with implementation of that unified department, I believe is, is, is infeasible and to meet the level of service expectations that this body has, has made.
So that would be a change from what we voted on in December. Mr. Fields?
Hey, can you give us kind of an update? I know you were going to try and meet with the townships to see what their feel was, to see if we could expect some of their support. I know we had a little presentation tonight, but what is the feeling of all the different townships involved?
We did have, I did have a meeting last night with town representatives. President Waters was present as well. They have, they've requested some additional information and need additional time to consider whether to join us in this venture. And so I'm working on providing the information that they've requested, largely trying to project what we think the per capita allocation might be going into the future, and as well as some other data on, that they requested as part of other contracts they hold with us, fire run, fire run reports and department budgets. So I think, I would say that they were open to considering the, the possibility of joining us in, in, in this service, but they are still considering all options before them to provide service to their communities.
So we are in questions and comments. Did you want to continue?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I got a couple of questions here, if you can bear with me. You're using this staffing model that McMahon presented us, to us back earlier. I know when I talked, when they were here and during his presentation, I questioned his man-hours because it didn't make sense to me. And he said that they weren't exact, they needed, that we would have to kind of refresh those or figure it out as we went. So I just ran a simple schedule. Took this schedule, just projected it out. Very simple. We're going to have nine full-time staff, which, if you take even the chief, he's going to have to work forty hours on call around manning the ambulance or fire truck. Well, nine times forty is three hundred and sixty hours. The schedule that McMahon presented requires four hundred and sixteen hours of full-time service every single week, fifty-two weeks out of the year. So basically, we're one and a half, one and three quarters full-time employees short on this schedule for your finances, and that's if we don't give anybody vacations, sick days, or holidays.
Which option are you looking at?
That was option one, because that's what I just looked at, because that was what he was recommending.
Okay.
Literally, we need three additional full-time people, because it comes out, if we give everybody full-time staff, two weeks of vacation and some sick days, it takes eleven point one people to fill this schedule in for the year. So you basically need twelve full-time people on staff for this schedule, wherever it says full-time on this schedule. Rest would be POPs and POCs, which you just got to hire accordingly, but we're three people short, and McMahon even said that that was the case. They didn't do the man-hours. We had to figure that out ourselves. It's just man-hours, forty hours a week.
Their, their schedule will be, not be based on a forty-hour work week schedule. Under the FLSA two oh seven K exemption, you are allowed to establish a twenty-eight-day work period in which you can work two hundred and twelve hours without, without incurring overtime costs.
in which you can work two hundred and twelve hours without incurring overtime costs. And so they will be working a twenty-four on, forty-eight off schedule. You'll have three shifts, A, B, and C, in which the full-time firefighters and advanced EMTs will be working a twenty-four hour shift with two days off, and then another twenty-four hour shift. The captains will be working a, will be working four tens during the week and having a forty-hour work week during the week. And so on average, we will have structured overtime costs into the schedule. We have put those into the proposed budget. They'll be working approximately somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and twenty-two shifts on average in a given year. There's thirteen twenty-eight day, about thirteen twenty-eight day tours in a year. So you can imagine they'll be at, at two hundred and twelve hours and thirteen shifts, that's about, I believe, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four hours. At the two hundred and twelve per twenty-eight day shift, they'll be scheduled in around twenty-nine twelve to twenty-nine twenty. Some twenty-eight day shifts, they will incur different numbers of overtime based on how the schedule falls, but we would be incorporating a twenty-eight-day work schedule under the 207K exemption that's allowed for public employees engaged in fire suppression activities.
So they're going to be basically working almost twenty-eight hundred hours a year?
Correct. And largely, the exemption is allowed for the understanding that they will be engaging, while they will be on shift, they're engaging in, in non-work activities while, while receiving pay and to provide relief to public entities that need to provide a twenty-four seven service. So they will be paid for any time that they would be sleeping during that twenty-four-hour shift, there'd be the established sleep time, and then also for the eating of their meals. And so that is the spirit of the 207K exemption, is to recognize those, the unique schedules that are necessary to provide twenty-four seven service.
That's an incredible amount of overtime.
Yeah, I just ran the numbers, that's a lot of hours.
Yeah, it is.
Yep, and you'll see we have fifty thousand dollars in overtime alone in that budget, twenty, around twenty-seven thousand of it is going to be structured into the schedule. We also anticipate using paid on-premise personnel to supplement for vacation and sick time when necessary in order to fill that position with a lower, a lower cost, a lower-cost role. But again, overtime is based on whether they exceed two hundred and twelve hours in a twenty-eight-day work period.
Full-time staff is going to be salaried, or are they going to be hourly?
Uh, it will, it'll be evaluated as to whether, if, if it depends, if there's a collective bargaining unit that we negotiate with under Wisconsin State statute in the single department, fire department, the top two ranks of that department can be considered supervisory. And so if we had, if we established that the full-time chief and the captains are the top two ranks, we would have an argument for them being considered supervisory unless outside of any, of any bargaining unit that may come into existence. And so we could, we, we may be able to have them be salaried, but their scheduled, their work schedule is based on working forty hours in a week at the captain level.
Because if you just take the six firefighters, not the supervision, times the seven hundred hours of overtime that they'll garnish over the course of a year, not with vacations or other things that come up, or comp days with holidays, you're looking at almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of overtime. You got fifty thousand punched in there.
The seven hundred, the seven hundred hours, I'm not, I'm not following you with them, the seven hundred hours per.
If you got twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight hundred hours, the average person's going to work two thousand eighty hours is forty hours.
The overtime is not calculated on twenty-eighty for the fire, for the firefighters, it's calculated on.
Twenty-seven fourteen, or twenty?
So there's thirteen, there are thirteen twenty-eight day periods in a work period, so two twelve times thirteen is twenty-seven sixty-four, I believe.
So you're saying there's only going to be a hundred hours of overtime you're estimating per person?
Probably a hundred and fifty.
Now, you're taking the revenue, the three hundred and fifty thousand hours projected for the EMS, and putting in your revenue, where are your expenses for all the second-out calls and the operation of a second ambulance? You're still going to have labor costs and call-in costs for that.
That's correct. We do have paid-on-call and paid-on-premise line items in the, in the staffing budget that was provided. So it would be utilized for, for those purposes when a paid-on-call individual was brought in, or if a paid-on-premise person was needed to be stationed in, in station at any given time. I believe it's a hundred and five thousand dollars for paid-on-premise and a hundred and.
Two hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand dollars for paid-on-call. I'm sorry, fifty-one five for paid-on-premise for option one. I would also indicate that there is, there are, there are a number of variables that go into this budget. We do, and we do budget for family health insurance for each full-time employee, that's about a thirteen thousand dollar difference between single, so there could be if an employee did not need the family coverage, there would be room made up there. We tried to be as conservative with our estimates as possible, erring on the side of higher costs rather than, than lower costs.
And the numbers just seem too low to me when I started doing them, because you're at almost twenty thousand hours for your paid-on-call and paid-on-premise, so depending on how that works out, there's a lot of hours to cover. And that's only going to give. If you start mixing your combination fire calls in there with the EMS, so.
That's correct.
I commend the fire department, they're going to put in a lot of hours.
Yeah, it is, it is based on an alternative schedule than the typical twenty-eighty that you see. It is allowable under the Federal Labor Standards Act. The twenty-four forty-eight schedule is, a schedule that is implemented in other, in fire departments across the nation. Captain Fader is available here if you have questions about scheduling and how, how the schedule would operate.
So those hours are common practice, then? That type of hour schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Should we have the captain speak, join in questions that?
Depends on.
Go ahead.
Staff wanting to bring the captain up or not.
If there are questions for him, he's available, but if not, I, we can take other questions.
Do you have any further questions there?
Good, right now.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Curler?
During public comment, Mr. Murphy brought up, as a resident of the city and taxpayer, a concern about what rate we would be charging the townships, and I was wondering if you could just elaborate on how you've built the budget and what that basis was for the townships.
The anticipated revenue from the townships, if they participated at the level that they're currently participating with at Lake Mills EMS, so the same population levels, we have assumed they, revenue at the seventeen dollar per capita rate, which is what Lake Mills EMS is currently charging.
And is that, I mean, I'm assuming all those townships set annual budgets just like we do, so they probably don't have a lot of flexibility to, to sign on to something that would be a higher cost for the balance of this calendar year, is that maybe another?
Certainly for 2023.
For the first year, yeah.
In future ongoing years, I think we would need to have conversations about increasing that, that rate as, as costs continue to rise.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, what would the, what would be the city of Lake Mills per capita for option one?
Based on our calculation, when you take the expense of the EMS-only side of the budget, subtract out the run revenue of three hundred and fifty thousand, subtract out the revenue from the towns at fifty-one thousand, and divide that by our population of sixty-four fifty-two, it comes to roughly ninety-two dollars per capita.
Are you including the capital in that, or no?
No.
That's another fifteen dollars per capita?
I don't want to interrupt Ms. Curler, if she has.
No, that was, that was not a great.
So, all right, let's pretend for a minute that we are going to go to referendum, and we put forth the wording for referendum to include the information of different options that's provided here in the, in the agenda. Remind me, the referendum is for one year?
It provides for the increase on an ongoing basis.
This would be forever.
Looking forward, you know, one of the things that I heard Ms. Curler say about the public works had to do with the, the waste area as far as, and then we also have the wastewater treatment plant to be considering, as well as some other budgetary hikes in what our taxpayers are going to be looking at. It's hard to stomach what this could look like, considering there are many houses in Lake Mills now that have been assessed to close to three hundred thousand dollars, even if that was not the original purchase price, mine included. So it, it, it does hit a little bit, and I'm, no, a lot. So I'm wondering, are we looking toward all of these other things that are going to be coming up, knowing that, yes, public safety is very important, and I do not minimize that, and to also acknowledge how much it's going to impact continuously over the course of time, and what we can do to diminish however much that's going to hurt the pocketbooks of, of our citizens? Because, sorry, that was it.
I, I, this is, this obviously represents a significant financial commitment on the behalf of, of the community. What I have tried to do is pair what I believe the city council's expected level of services with the necessary staffing and necessary budget in order to bring that to fruition. I understand that the, the city council is juggling and considering multiple investments that will affect the, the community, and that this would be a, a significant one on top of those as well. So I, I am, I am sensitive to that, to that as well. What I can, what I can say is that this is the, this is how I believe we could implement a department that can meet the services that I understand the city council's goals to be. With that being said, as I said at the end of my statements, if the city council chooses to forego a referendum, we do have options to provide EMS service to the community. Those services are through a, a contracted service that wouldn't help on the fire department side of things. That option is, is still available to you. And if that would be the direction that this body wants to go, and would prefer to forego that, that referendum for any of the reasons that you will, that you are discussing tonight, we do have options available to continue to provide EMS service if this body is, if that level of service is acceptable to this body. But based on what I understand your goals to be, is what the options presented, and ultimately my recommendation is attempting to meet.
Go ahead.
I wonder if I could just follow up on that last point. So if we move forward and, and approve a recommend, a referendum, and that referendum fails, or if we do not choose to go the route of a referendum, either way, you're saying that you would seek a third-party contractor. We've budgeted, you know, for the full year, knowing that we would only be contracting with Lake Mills EMS through the end of June, so there is that dollar amount that's in our budget. My understanding from the, at least the information that we received back in December from Ryan Brothers, is that there would be some kind of startup costs that are not very clearly defined, but reading, you know, information from Fort Atkinson's experience and some of the other communities, it seems like that startup cost could be significant. And I guess I'm wondering if it, I guess my, my thinking is that that would be a stop-gap measure. It doesn't sound like that would be, it doesn't feel to me like that would be a long-term solution. If it was, perhaps we would have voted for that in December, but that doesn't seem like that's going to be a long-term solution. I guess, can you, do you have any thoughts on that as far as, with the third-party contract?
I think I had read that it was a thirty thousand dollar startup cost was, I believe.
Yeah, the proposal that they provided, indicated a thirty thousand dollar startup cost. Now, there are other, there are other third-party contractors that we can try and, and work with, and we would need to have a firm contract that set expectations and, and costs in it. Just to, just to, as a kind of a review, that proposal had one dedicated ambulance for the service, and then if there were other calls, they would rely on apparatus that they had in the area to, to respond to, to other calls if they were coming in simultaneously.
Does that mean mutual aid?
Not necessarily. It depend, it would depend, Ryan, they, they, there's inter-facility transports, they have ambulances that are at any given time somewhere within the region. So depending where one is, the closest one, if able, would respond. If they needed to, they could also call for, for mutual aid from another entity, but they would rely on where their personnel and equipment are at any given time if the primary ambulance was, was insert, was on a call. To, to answer your question about, you know, long-term, the best way to answer that, I think, is from a perspective of the fire department, is that the fire department is also facing a, a shrinking volunteer workforce. They're, they are currently not at the same staffing, staffing level concerns as perhaps EMS has been facing, which has, which led to the termination of service. But they are seeing a, a shrinking volunteer workforce. I believe the roster previously was at thirty-eight, it's fallen to thirty-two, looking to add two more to that roster here soon to enter a probationary period to be at, at thirty-four. A EMS-only contract does not provide any relief to any future fire staffing issues, issues that we have. So we may in the future need to consider how to rectify fire department staffing issues and how that works with the, with the contract that we have in place at that time, would need to be worked through at that time. So I, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Isn't it true, though, that we get more EMS calls than we do fire department calls?
That is correct. For round numbers, you can use eight hundred EMS calls to probably two hundred fire calls.
So we're putting a lot of money into the fire department, and I'm not saying that that's not worth it, but I'm just curious about how, you know, how are we justifying that when we look at what EMS is going to, how many calls they, EMS would get in comparison to the fire department?
Yeah, if you look at the, at the kind of the budgets that were presented, specifically staffing, you'll see that seventy-five percent of the staffing wages are attributable to the EMS portion, the EMS fund portion of that budget. So we try and show that breakdown that way. Seventy-five percent of those costs are attributed to EMS service and not fire service. The cross-training is meant to mitigate the difficulties across both services, as well as, I, I As well as, I I I will state, the the two oh seven K exemption that I referenced earlier is only for those involved in fire suppression activities. If we were to build or if we were to have, for example, a a separate EMS department with full-time staff, we would, we would need to staff and and budget for that based on the forty-hour work week, two thousand eighty hours in a year.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Mrs. Bishop, I have some some comments, but I wanted to give you a chance if you wanted.
Um, Mr. Waters, only to go back to the decision previously made by council was Monday through Friday, full-time staffing. And my understanding of that through our work session and our discussion at the meeting December twentieth was full-time staffing was not somebody from full-time staff available twenty-four hours, but it was full-time staffing during essentially business hours. And so I'd like to renew my point of order because to move forward on anything else, even as Mr. Daly concedes that his new option to has twenty-four hour staffing with full-time staff. Um, so to move forward on that disregards both our legislative intent and it erodes the council's power-making and decision-making authority absent a motion and a vote to do something different.
If you would like, someone could make a motion to reconsider action previously taken. The item was noticed the same when that action was taken, so I believe it would be appropriate if you wanted to start with as if there is no previous action taken. It would essentially provide you with a clean slate slate for consideration.
A motion for reconsideration, respectfully, Mr. Daly, is also out of order because we are outside of or we are past the regularly scheduled meeting directly after that decision was made.
Mrs. Bishop, while the staff are evaluating, um, researching options, um, I appreciate your raising this issue. Do you have a proposed solution for how we can move forward?
Well, like I said, um, the council made a decision with motion twenty-two dash twelve dash two dash one, so absent a motion and vote to do otherwise, um, you know, I I wouldn't support anything else.
Based on the information we've received tonight, I believe that would require some sort of a referendum. We don't have, and so on.
Well.
Sure, Ms. Curler, and I'm not speaking about the referendum, but my concern is without doing this procedurally correctly, that action that implements something different than what the council has previously decided on may be invalid.
So what do you, do you have a belief or an understanding for what would be a way for us to move forward in light of a recommendation from the administration that our current, that our passed vote is not a viable option?
I mean, I don't know if there's a legal answer to that, but usually the previous decision would stand absent a motion and vote to do something else.
Would that be an amendment to the previous motion?
My, I I'm doing some quick research here. Um, I think there is more, uh, well, potentially more flexibility with the motion to reconsider. Um, there would also be an option to, a motion to rescind the previous action that was taken and I don't see a time, um, limit on that action.
You should have motioned rescind, and what was the first one there, Mr. Dresser?
What's that?
You you had stated two different types of motions.
Yeah, um, I, there may be more flexibility with the motion to reconsider with, which Ms. Bishop correctly stated that it wasn't done at the next meeting, it wasn't done, um, at the same meeting, so that may not be an appropriate route. I do believe that you could, because no action is taken, because there's new information, you could rescind the previous motion and make a new motion to address this issue within light of the new information. Um, that that likely is an appropriate action at this point, if that is what you desire. I I recognize exactly what Ms. Bishop is is getting at. Um, and the the facts of the matter is that there's, there is new information to consider. The, um, scheduling and the original reliance on the paid-on-premises individuals, the employees that were available based on the previous motion, that circumstance has changed. Um, I I believe that the overnight coverage was intended to be, um, provided by paid-on-premises individuals by and large, and that's, that's simply not, um, something that looks like at this point can be, um, accomplished and maintained. And I believe that is the the onus behind this, um, rescheduling effort. So, yeah, with regard to the question that's at hand, if you're looking to take action on the previous motion that was adopted by the city council, a motion to rescind, um, a verification of that, uh, motion and then a subsequent act would be appropriate.
Mr. Dresser, does it need to be rescinded by the person who authored it?
No. There, that's the point of the vote, there'd be a motion and a second and then a vote if that's the right route that you decide to go.
Right, unlike a motion to reconsider, the motion does not need to be made by someone on the prevailing side. A motion to rescind can be made by any member of the body.
So I'll hold my comments until we get past this, uh, this issue. If there, uh, I guess is not a motion here, um, we pretty much will close down discussion at this point.
It seems to me that there's a difference, enough difference between, well, I guess, as I said before, the city manager's telling us that the decision that we made previously on, you know, looking into further detail and what it would take to implement that, he's advising us that it's not feasible. So it does seem that it would be appropriate for us to rescind that and then look at the, the the, uh, proposals that are before us tonight to make a new decision.
So I think the only way to move forward at this point is a motion to rescind. So what was that previous document?
Uh, the the motion number of the previous motion adopted by the city council was twenty-two dash twelve dash two dash one.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to rescind the prior motion of twenty-two dash twelve dash two dash one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Waters, second by Ms. Curler, any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Oh, Mr. Fields, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fields.
Mr. Dresser, quick question for you. Um, just because I've announced it all the other times, that I'm part of the EMS, the Lake Mills EMS. Being our last vote took care of that, would it be appropriate to abstain at this point during these votes?
I I don't perceive, personally, and looking at it from your position, I don't perceive a conflict of interest when the the entity that you had a a relationship with is no longer within the fray.
Okay, sounds good, just wanted to verify with you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. Misty, can you do a roll call on a motion to rescind twenty-two dash twelve dash two dash one?
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Motion passes three-two.
Right, so we currently do not have a motion.
So does that mean that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Um, I would like to amend motion twenty-two dash twelve dash two dash one to implement option three for contract emergency medical services.
So there's a motion on the table. And Mrs. Bishop, is there a second?
I have a problem here, um, thanks, Dwayne, for this. There may be an issue because this motion to rescind was not specifically noticed. I believe that it does require a two-thirds or or a supermajority vote for it to be passed. Um, to rescind or repeal is a specific main motion, not in order when the subject can be reached by reconsideration. We established it cannot be reached by reconsideration. Um, it cannot be applied to action that cannot be reversed, this can be reversed. Four, it requires a two-thirds vote of members present or majority vote of the entire membership unless previous notice has been given of this particular motion to rescind. So I don't believe, based on that statement, what's that? I don't believe, based on that statement in Robert, Roberts Rules of Order, that we have that supermajority vote at this time and that that motion can be rescinded without having gone through a notice process.
Um, Mr. Dresser, what number is that in Roberts Rules?
Um, it is under the, I'm I'm looking at an abbreviated, uh, an at-a-glance guide, but it is under the motion to rescind or repeal. Um, I'm looking at page twenty, it's immediately after reconsideration. I can go, um, grab my, uh, actual Roberts Rules and and go from there if you'd like to get to that point.
No, hold on, I'll take a look and I'll let you know.
Yeah, please do, I'm going to Google it at the same time.
So I think what you're saying is, I mean, it is, it is, um, it is appropriate to, or it is possible to adopt, to make a motion to rescind and to pass that, but we didn't pass it because we didn't have a supermajority of votes.
That, that's my understanding of what I just read.
Failed because we only had three votes in favor.
Correct, that's my understanding at this point in time.
So that means that the motion that we adopted in December is still in effect, correct?
Yes, but because we're at the same meeting despite motion not being given, I believe a motion for reconsideration of that motion to rescind could be available to you if someone wanted to change their vote and provide a supermajority.
A motion to reconsider would have to be made by Mr. Fields or Mrs. Bishop.
Correct.
So otherwise, we'll be at a standstill and we'll have to reconvene into a, probably a special meeting where this is given notice so that we could, uh, pass it on a simple majority. So, uh, option three is not currently on the table, to clarify.
Would, given the fact that we are now putting it, not putting it off, but, um, delaying it another two weeks to our next meeting.
No, we're delaying it to probably a meeting next week.
Next week, okay.
A special meeting next week because we have a January twenty-fourth date, I believe, to meet as far as referendums go.
You would have to meet no later than the twenty-third in order to provide the right language to the county by the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So is there any further consideration on the motion to rescind?
So just to clarify, the last thing I heard from staff is that if either of the no votes on the motion to rescind made a motion for us to reconsider that and it had a different outcome, had a supermajority outcome, that would be the only way we could then move forward.
Right, basically.
Without notice.
Without a notice and a separate meeting.
Motion to reconsider would require a simple majority, I believe. And and the motion to, if another motion to rescind, if that motion, the reconsideration of the motion to rescind would then need the supermajority.
So it's a Robert Rules, since there was no notice of this, uh, motion to rescind, we have to have a supermajority tonight. So the only two that can really bring up the reconsideration of the motion to rescind would be Mr. Fields and Mrs. Bishop at this point. So going twice? All right, so the way I see it at this point is, um, the discussion would close down on this topic right now and, uh, we would have to look at reconvening with a special meeting sometime next. Well, it could be later this week or or next week, we basically need to give two days' notice on that meeting.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hour notice on that meeting.
So just a, um, maybe a point of clarification, it's, it's, um, it was duly noticed that we were going to have this discussion and some of the information in the city manager's or administration's memo includes expanding the police force, which we haven't discussed yet tonight, is there, is it within order to discuss that this evening? Or would you, you're saying it's not?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
Because it's related to the whole encompassing discussion.
Would it be appropriate to table resolution twenty-three dash four in response to this situation?
Twenty-three dash four.
That's next, that's the next thing. Yeah, well, I guess we have to get to that next, yeah.
We could take a short recess to allow us to research options available to you under parliamentary procedure.
Okay, I move to take a five-minute break to help, or, Mr. Dresser, is five minutes appropriate? Or would you like more time?
Ten minutes.
A ten-minute break, um, to help staff have time to do some research.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidno, second by Mr. Fields, need discussion. Uh, all those in favor, raise your hand. Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Five-oh. We are in recess as of eight-thirty.